Mr. Clerk, if you will please call a roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Van Johnson.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem and District Five Alderwoman, Dr. Estella Edward Shabazz.
Present.
Chairman and District Four Alderman, Nick Palumbo.
Present.
Vice Chair and District Three Alderwoman, Linda Wild O'Brien.
It's pink and Savannah. Let's go.
Post One Alderwoman, Carolyn H. Bell. Post Two Alderwoman, Alicia Miller Blake.
Present.
District One Alderwoman, Bernetta B. Lanier. District Two Alderman.
She's here.
District Leggett.
Here.
And District Six Alderman, Curtis Purty.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a form.
Thank you. All rise. I call this meeting of Savannah City Council to order. Today's date is Thursday, October the ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. It is the two hundred and forty-sixth anniversary of the Siege of Savannah, which occurred on this date in seventeen seventy-nine. Savannah will be a safe and environmentally healthy, economically thriving community for all. And for us, all means all. We're happy to have all of you who've joined us in our chambers and across our various media platforms. Today's invocation invicto will be introduced by Alderwoman Bernetta Lanier of the First District.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon to everyone. Before us today, we have Pastor Tony E. Reddick of New Shallow Missionary Baptist Church of six sixty-one East Broughton Street in Savannah, Georgia. Pastor Tony E. Reddick is a man after God's own heart, who also has a love for God's people. At an early age of six years old, Pastor Tony Reddick was baptized under the leadership of Reverend W. N. Robinson, pastor of First Nazareth Missionary Baptist Church in Savannah, Georgia. Pastor Reddick is the son of the late Mr. Emmanuel M. Reddick and Mrs. Barbara Hall Jackson. Pastor Tony E. Reddick is the oldest of four siblings and the father of two sons, four grandchildren and four great-grandchildren. Pastor Reddick is a proud alumni of Robert W. Groves High School, class of nineteen eighty-four. After graduation from high school, Pastor Reddick relocated to Atlanta, Georgia, seeking to become a pioneer in the workforce. Pastor Reddick was taught early in life, if a man doesn't work, a man cannot eat. While living in Atlanta, Georgia, Pastor Reddick was under the leadership of Bishop James H. Morton, the pastor of the New Beginnings Full Gospel Baptist Church. Before receiving his calling from the Lord, he served in the Ushers ministry and also served as a counselor for the new members ministry. In nineteen eighty-two, he heard the voice of God calling him to preach the gospel. In nineteen ninety-three, the call was answered. And in nineteen ninety-four, God told him it was time to return back home. It was a struggle. He became obedient to God's voice and moved back after nine years. In that same year, he preached his initial sermon under the leadership of Reverend W. N. Robinson, pastor of New Nazareth Missionary Baptist Church. Pastor Robinson was a Bible-based teacher in a Bible-based church. And in the year of nineteen ninety-five, he was ordained to preach the word of God after the demise of Pastor Robinson. He was called to serve and interim pastor at the First Nazareth Missionary Baptist Church for two years. In two thousand and two, he was called to pastor New Shallow Missionary Baptist Church. And twenty-three years later, he's still serving God's people. Thank you, Pastor, for joining us today. Go right ahead, serve.
Oh, praise the eternal Father in the name of Jesus. Lord, we come and we stand humble before your throne of grace. But, Lord, we come today to tell you thank you.
Thank you.
Lord, we thank you because you've been so good. And not only have you been good, Lord, but you have been so kind. And, Lord, as we look around, God, we know that it was you that brought us from the rocking of our cradle, oh, Father God, up into this present time. So, Lord, we come to tell you thank you today. And, God, we ask, oh, Lord, that you look upon this entire council, Lord, that you supply them whatever it is that they stand in need of. And, oh, Lord, God, if you find anything that's not like you that needs to be fixed, God, we ask that you fix it in the name of Jesus. And then, Lord, God, we pray in the name of Jesus, Lord, because our city needs a healing. And, God, we know that our city needs a healing, but nobody can do it but you. But, God, we ask, oh, Lord, that we allow these men and women to come together collectively, Lord, that it will be on one accord in the name of Jesus. And, oh, Lord, if there's any backbiting, any excessive anger, Lord, anything that may bring about division, Lord, we pray in the name of Jesus that it will cease in the name of Jesus right now today, Lord. Because, Lord, they can't make it without you, Lord, but they can make it with you, Lord. And if they know that you are the way, the truth, and the light, Lord, lead them and guide them in the name of Jesus. And then, Lord, God, I read in your word, oh, Lord, in Second Chronicles seven and fourteen, you said that if my people, which are called by my name, if they would only humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, you said that I will come down and heal the land. And, God, we need a healing in Savannah, Georgia. Lord, we need the killing to stop in Savannah, Georgia. God, we need the drug reign to stop in Savannah, Georgia, Lord. We need, oh, Father God, everybody to come together and be on one accord in the name of Jesus. So, Lord, I'm asking you to let it start in this house. Because we believe that if it starts in this house, then every other house would be able to reign and do what's right in Jesus' name. So, Lord, we thank you now. We bless you now. We glorify your name for who you are, for what you have done, but most solemnly, for what you're gonna do. We count it all done. Let every heart say amen. Amen. Let us all say amen. God bless you.
Well, I was gonna pass around the offering plate. I felt my hope coming on. I almost got a little bit happy there now.
Just so you know, that's Pastor Tony Reddick.
I know.
Six sixty-one.
Yes.
East Broughton Street, Second District.
Yes. Let us honor our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all so much, Pastor Reddick. Thank you. Pastor Reddick is my good friend over a number of years. He is the official unofficial airport chaplain for our Savannah Hilton Head International Airport. And he certainly sees after all of our spiritual needs. So, thank you, sir. And we appreciate all that you do.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Good afternoon. Let's get started. Yes.
For our first item on the agenda, I would like to make a motion for the adoption of the regular meeting agenda for October ninth, two thousand and twenty-five.
A second. I'm gonna amend that to add a presentation. All right. Been properly moved and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
For our second item on the agenda, I would like to make a motion for the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held on September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five at two o'clock P.M.
Been properly moved and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. This afternoon, the City Council held an executive session dealing with issues of legal and personnel. I'm requesting a motion that you authorize me to sign an affidavit that our discussion was limited to those items and that no votes were taken during that meeting.
Yes, sir. So moved, sir.
Second. Been properly moved and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Did we ever say that October was the greatest month of the entire year?
Happy belated birthday.
It is, for a variety of reasons. But it's also a great opportunity for us to not only connect, uplift individuals in our community that are not only protecting those impacted, but also addressing future generations. I'm gonna ask our friends from Safe Shelter and our domestic violence warriors to come up.
Yeah, all y'all. Hey, come on up, come on. Very good. All right.
Have a proclamation that reads as follows. Whereas domestic violence is a pervasive and silent crisis that affects people of all ages, genders, races, and socioeconomic backgrounds cunning across neighborhoods, workplaces, and homes. And whereas the city of Savannah stands with survivors and victims and overcomers of domestic violence, recognizing the courage it takes to seek help, the strength it takes to heal, and the resilience it takes to rebuild. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is observed nationwide during October to highlight the work of advocates, shelters, law enforcement, health agencies, and community organizations that provide critical support to victims and hold perpetrators accountable. And whereas in Savannah, Safe Shelter and other local service providers continues tirelessly to offer shelter, counseling, legal advocacy, and outreach services, even in the face of limited resources, helping survivors rebuild their lives with safety and dignity. And whereas raising public awareness, dismantling stigma, and educating our community about domestic violence are essential steps toward prevention, early intervention, and healing. Whereas the city of Savannah is committed to supporting survivors, strengthening our network of resources, and promoting a culture that rejects abuse and protects all citizens. And therefore, I, Van R. Johnson II, Mayor of the city of Savannah, hereby proclaim October, two thousand and twenty-five, as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Savannah. And I continue to call on residents, residents, businesses, and civic organizations to join me in raising awareness, supporting survivors, and advancing safety, justice, and healing in our community. A witness where I've set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Savannah to be affixed. And thanks to our improvements of City Hall, we had City Hall lit in purple in honor of Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Thanks, y'all. The pastor stole my speech. Seriously, I don't come out in public a lot because we've been keeping our... Oh, I'm so sorry. This is Shannon Bates, the CEO for Safe Shelter, here in partnership with other community partners dedicated to decreasing domestic violence in our community. As I was saying, I don't come out much because I'm dedicated with our staff showing up every day, not to a battered women's shelter, but to a safe place for families where we provide everybody dignity and safety. And I am just thrilled to have about half of our staff here today, twenty-nine of the hardest-working people you've ever met who show up every day to advocate for these victims. What we noticed these last couple of years is that kids are coming to our shelter, moms are coming to our shelter. are coming to our shelter, who were kids at our shelter, who had been kids at our shelter are now coming in as victims. And if they're coming in as victims, you know there are little perpetrators running around out there. So, we have written a lot of really good grants to help us intervene at the age of two for these kids of domestic violence. So, I'd love to talk to y'all more about that, but I'm here today to spread awareness for the month, to celebrate our staff, and to celebrate our community partners, and I didn't want to have to follow Ms. Alston, so I will turn it over to her.
Good evening, everyone. I am Karen Denise Alston, the CEO and founder of For the Jewel in You. I hear you, ma'am. That's why I wrote my stuff down, so I stay on track this morning. So, I stand before you on behalf of For the Jewel, along with the Safe Shelter, and all of our team is together as united. The scripture reminds us in Ecclesiastes 4 and 12, "A cord of three strands is not easily broken." And For the Jewel in You, the verse is not just a scripture, it is our foundation, it is the heartbeat of everything that we do. We believe that those three strands represent faith, community, and compassion woven together to create strength, restoration, and hope that can be undone. Every day, the jewel becomes that cord for survivors, standing with them through fear, through healing, and through transformation. Our work is not once a year on the month of October. It is not a single month. It continues 365 days out of the year, reaching survivors where they are and walking beside them as they rebuild their lives, one strand of courage at a time. This October, and since October of last year, the Jewel has answered over 270 calls for help. That's averaging 23 calls per month, day or night, each one representing a moment of bravery, a voice reaching out for safety, for peace, for hope. Through our community education and our empowerment classes, in partnership with Union Mission and Safe Shelter, we have served an average of 87 individuals every month. These moments of education becomes lifelines, places where survivors rediscover confidence, resilience, and the strength to rise again. This year, this month, October the 18th, the Jewel we established, we created, and under the leadership of the Safe Shelter, together, we will launch the SHIELD program, survivors helping individuals, inspiring each other to live and dream without violence and without fear. Along with this collaboration, we also celebrate our Chief Gunter and the Savannah Police Department, who is gonna make sure that when our community network support group comes together, that they are definitely in a safe place, a place where they're gonna join hands to heal together, proving that when women rise as one, generations are changed forever. And through our partnership with Public Health for Kids, we created and designed Ocho, the Octopus Friendship Lab. Since February, we have had, we have been going into the 24th Century After School programs, teaching our children. We have reached over 160 children, teaching them about kindness, emotional awareness, and self-worth. By the end of this year, we expect to reach nearly 300-plus children. Each child, after they leave that program, which is 70 children, starting October the 22nd, each child will walk out of our classes with a complete family hygiene kit, a reminder that dignity and care belong to them. We are the Jewel. We stand united, not united, saying that these cords will not be broken. And in my closing...
Mm-hmm.
Oh, wait a minute. We also made history, we made history in partnership with the Safe Shelter's candlelight vigil. We reconstructed our 5K walk, and we led our first candlelight silent vigil walk through our beautiful park. That evening, survivors, families, and advocates walked together in silence, candles glowing against the night, with the SPD offers leading and taking up the end of the walk on their mounted horses. We were excited. Thank you, Chief Gunter, for always answering our calls. But, friends, this cord is not complete without you. Your prayers, your presence, your voice, they strengthen the line that holds our community together. So, today, right now, as we honor Domestic Violence Awareness Month, I invite you, we invite you, to stand with us, not just by voice, but to volunteer, to give, to activate, and to carry this message forward, because together, we can remind, we can remind every survivor that they are not forgotten, they are not broken, and never alone, because when faith, community, and compassion are woven together, as the scripture declares, "A cord of these strands is not easily broken."
And the church said...
Amen!
I knew she was gonna preach. She can't help it. Why don't we go down, we'll start here, and we'll come up. Just state your name and your affiliation, we'll come all the way down. We'll start all the way down here.
Good afternoon, I'm Latisha Almer. I am the Shelter Manager for Safe Shelter.
All right.
Good afternoon, I'm Raven Hall, and I'm the Assistant Shelter Manager at Safe Shelter.
Good afternoon, I'm Jamie Joseph, and I'm an Executive Board Member of the Jewel in You.
Good afternoon, my name is Melissa Klein. I'm an Ambassador for the Jewel in You.
Good afternoon, my name is Sydney. I am the Administrative Community Liaison for Safe Shelter.
Hello, good afternoon, my name is Daisy Hernandez. I'm the Director of Outreach and Community Education at Safe Shelter.
Good afternoon, I'm Simone Johnson, and I'm one of the legal advocates at Safe Shelter.
Good afternoon, my name is Dorkees Davis, and I'm a legal advocate as well at Safe Shelter.
Good afternoon, I am Tamare Schwartz Fisher. I'm the Administrative Operations Manager for Safe Shelter.
Good afternoon, I'm Catherine Bostwick. I'm the Director of Development for Safe Shelter.
Hello, I'm Lydia Rayner Sayed. I'm the Vice President of the Board of Directors for the Jewel in You.
And a pastor, thank you very much for what you do.
Good afternoon, my name is Candice Johnson Butler, and I'm Ambassador for the Jewel in You.
We want to thank all of you for the work. We work toward the day when not another person, man, woman, or child, is victimized because of domestic violence. Until we get to that point where all means all and zero means zero, we have continued work to do, and I thank you all for being advocates in the work that you do. If someone needs help, who should they call? Is it 629-8888? How did I know that? 912-629-8888, or call 911. Love should never have to hurt. Love shouldn't hurt. And so, thank you all so much, and we're so appreciative of all the work you do. Let's give them all a round of applause.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just want to thank Karen, class of 1976 from Savannah High was a beast. We got so many warriors in that class. Thank you. Yeah, killer bees, that's what we are.
Thank you so much. And for October, we also have ladies in pink, so we're gonna ask our breast cancer warriors to come up. All right. All right. Hey, 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 how you doing? Sorry to that. All right. Hey, 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 how you doing? Hey. Proclamation reads, "Whereas breast cancer remains one of the most common cancers affecting women in the United States and continues to impact families and communities across our nation, and whereas early detection through regular screening and mammography saves lives and advances in treatment and research continue to provide hope for improved outcomes and ultimately a cure. And whereas the city of Savannah recognizes the courage and resilience of breast cancer survivors, honors the memory of those we have lost, and stands in solidarity with the families and caregivers who provide unwavering love and support. And whereas community organizations, healthcare providers, and advocates throughout Savannah work tirelessly to raise awareness, provide education, support, research, and offer critical resources to individuals battling the disease. And whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month, observed each October, serves as a vital reminder of the importance of education, prevention, and compassion in the fight against breast cancer. And whereas by wearing pink, participating in awareness events, and supporting organizations dedicated to research and patient care, the citizens of Savannah can help strengthen the fight for a future free of breast cancer. Now, therefore, I vouch for Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Savannah, to hereby proclaim October 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Savannah, and encourage all residents to join together in spreading awareness and supporting those affected and promoting early detection and continued research toward a cure. Ladies and gentlemen, obviously, and we'll talk a little bit more about stories, but every individual in front of us has a story, has a story. And they're also here representing some folks who cannot tell their stories anymore. But also, because they're here, other folks will have a story to tell. And so, I cannot thank, of course, everyone knows and loves Tina Tyshaw and the work that she's been doing for years through Buddy Check 3. I find myself on the 3rd of each month in the mirror doing what, you know, it's not fun, but I do it, because it's a reminder. And people have found their way because of that quick breast self-examination. Men get breast cancer too, but they've been going around the city, as well as St. Joseph's Candler, and they have a van outside that we were supposed to sign, but we were a little late in executive session, but we will get out there to make sure that we're signing and that we're all a part of that. So, congratulations, and we will continue to work until, again, zero means zero and all means all.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor Van Johnson, and thank you, City of Savannah Council. Thank you to our City Manager, Jay Melder, all of the coworkers here for the City of Savannah. My heart is full. I want you to know that for the last 23 years, WSAV and St. Joseph's Candler have partnered. We don't wait until October to raise awareness. We raise awareness every month, on the 3rd of the month. Of course, the 3 stands for WSAV News 3 on your side. As we continue to write this chapter of hope, faith, and love, please make sure, all of you in this room, do your breast self-exam every month, and also, get your mammograms. For those who are old enough, get your mammograms. It is important. 1% of men will be diagnosed every year. That is the truth, and nothing but the truth from the experts. And we know that all of us in this very chamber have been touched in some way. We know someone who has lost their battle to breast cancer. We know those who are fighting this disease right now. We know those who are survivors. We want to lift, continue to educate. That is what this mission is all about. And just a few days ago, the women behind me, whether they were serving as models, survivors, or serving as the emcee, or serving as the person who Tina calls to do everything every year, Sharon Wanda Akins. Our Healing Heroes Tribute to Breast Cancer Fashion Show was simply amazing. Chief Gunther's mom, Selma, was one of our models. She's a breast cancer survivor. So, we all know someone. Let's continue to fight this fight together, because when we fight together, we win together. Early detection really does save lives. And as I mentioned, we're continuing to write this chapter. So, what I'd like for all of you to do is to go to wsav.com/pttp. That stands for Paint the Town Pink. WSAV has partnered this year with St. Joseph's Candler and the Savannah Morning News to spread the message. There are many activities happening. We know you can't make it to all of those activities, but we'd love to see you, and we want you to sign the pink Jeep. And, Mr. Mayor, once we're done, I'm so sorry that we do have to leave because our driver has to get back to work. However, we're gonna make it our mission to come back before the month is over, because we'd love for all of our city leaders to sign the pink Jeep. It'll be riding or rolling all across Savannah, so if you see the pink Jeep and you're out and about, just sign it then, come back and sign it again as well. There's a QR code. Please check out that QR code and donate to Telfair Mammography Fund. This is the mission, to help those uninsured and underinsured women be able to get their mammogram. That is what Healing Heroes Tribute to Breast Cancer Survivors Fashion Show was all about. We are continuing to raise money all month, so you know WSAV is 1430 East Victory Drive. Drop off your donations, I'd appreciate that. Thank you so much. And now, I would like for three people quickly that I've asked to say a few words, just a few words, about their journey with breast cancer. And one of these ladies has been touched in a way where her sister did not make it. And we just want to share quickly with you their stories. Tarcha?
Okay, Tina's gonna make me cry. I'm here for... I'm Tarcha Bush. I'm the executive producer for The Bridge and Special Projects at WSAV. I'm here to share the story of somebody who could not be here to share hers. I'm sorry. My sister Tia was diagnosed with breast cancer at the age of 29, and she died at 31. So, I just want you all to know her name. Her name was Tia Smith. She was a graduate of Johnson High School at Georgia Southern Eagle. She attended Armstrong. She was a teacher, special education teacher at the Savannah-Chattanooga Public Schools when she passed away. She died in 1998, and I miss her every day. But I just want you guys to know that you can be diagnosed very early. She was 29. If you have someone in your family who's diagnosed that young and you're a woman, you have to get prescriptions to get mammograms, and insurance will cover it. That's important to know. Ask your doctor for a prescription to get your mammogram. It's very important. It can save your life. It didn't save my sister, but I'm here to speak for her.
Hello, everyone. My name is Karen Evans. I lost my mother to breast cancer. She was 35 when she passed. I am, I got diagnosed this year, February 21st of this year, so my journey is just starting. I encourage, and I went for my mammograms every year, didn't miss one. Well, it's helpful when we had the storm and COVID, but I would like to encourage everyone to please, 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 go get your mammogram. It is very important. And like I said, I encourage both women and men. I encourage my brothers to go, because I did the genital test, the chronological test. I don't have it, so it can all, it might have been passed down to my brothers. So, I encourage them to go get it checked. So, again, I was like, to let everybody know, please go get checked, and as I stated, my journey is just starting. But along... as I stated, my journey is just starting. But along my journey, I met all these beautiful women that have supported me, and I just want to thank everyone, and just please go get tested.
I just want to say this before the last person speaks. Many of you probably know Karen's face from Dillers. She's been there forever, and everybody loves Karen because they know they can call her and tell them what they want, what they need to wear, and that's me for the last 10, 15 years. Okay, this is what I'm doing. Just pick out something for me. She is just a diamond. And please continue to pray for her, but not only Karen, all of our survivors, all of the families. Please pray. Thank you so much. And our last speaker is Shababara Everett Best.
Hi, my name is Shababara Best Everett. Let me bring it down. I am a three-time cancer survivor, and I had cancer, breast cancer, at 21 years old that I found through a self-breast exam. I had cervical cancer at 23 years old, and through an annual mammogram, I found out I had breast cancer again at 36 years old. So yes, those checks do work because I'm still here today, 13 years cancer-free. Thank you.
I realize, working in my office every day, that I have a story sitting in my office.
Good morning. Well, not morning. Good afternoon. So... My name is Farrah Lawrence, and I am a breast cancer survivor. My story started June 26, 2022. My story started as a motherless daughter going through this journey. So I want to first give thanks to God because without God, I would not have gotten through my journey. When I was diagnosed with breast cancer, I will be honest, I did not want to go through the treatments. So I was just going to let the cancer just go through my body because I felt like at 46, I lived a good life. So my doctor said to me, just give me one year of your life, and I'm gonna give you a lifetime. And I stand here today, three years in remission. And I know that God has a purpose for my life because when I rang the bell September 18th, 2022, I got a phone call September 20th, 2022, that my niece inter forced a kid because her mom died from a drug addiction. So I asked, why me? And I remember my pastor, Mr. Pastor Sloan back in Brooklyn, New York, he said, why not you? So I stood up to another challenge to become a caretaker of a two-year-old at this time that everyone know as little friend. So I just encourage everyone to go and get your mammograms. Early detection is key. Early detection saved my life. I was a person who did not have any signs, no symptoms, and I just went in just asking for a mammogram, and then they gave me my diagnosis. So it's very important. If you need support, lean on your family, lean on your friends. You do not have to go through this alone, and most importantly, with God and faith in your life, you will not go through this journey alone. So before I end, I just want to say a few thank yous. So first, I want to thank my children, Tariq and Tyler, and now Aviana. And I want to also thank Mayor Van Johnson. He may not remember, but the first time we met, I was the county director at DFAC, and I invited him to one of our employee appreciation parties. But the day before, we had another event, and I saw him, and I had braids in my hair, and he came when I was at the event. He said, girl, what you doing? Didn't I just see you with braids? Because I had another wig, I had another wig on. And that's when I really started to share my journey. So I want to thank Mayor Van Johnson. I want to thank all my family and friends back at home. I want to thank my friends in Savannah. I want to thank Ms. Tina Tyshaw. We met in 2023, and I participated in her fashion show in 2023, and I will be remiss not to thank Savannah Impact Program, Latoya Daniels, Coach Carter, Coach Brooks. Everyone stepped in. I want to also thank the Chief Gunther for being a real support for me at that time. I want to thank the 100 Black Men Organization because they stood in for my son when I could not be there. And I just want to thank my treatment team at St. Joseph's Candler.
Thank you. Thank you, Tina, for telling me to come on up here. I'm Joyce Williams. I'm with Keepers of the Flame Foundation. Thank you, Mayor Van Johnson, for inviting us to be here as well. And I just wanted to say, it's getting all triggering here, hearing from all of my beautiful sisters here. I'm a survivor. I was diagnosed at the age of 36. And when I look out here, I see beauty. I see courage. I see strength. And I just wanted to make sure everybody here also knew, including my survivor sisters, that when you're going through the treatment process and you're feeling all the feels, nothing is wrong with you. It's not our weakness to be human. It's to be expected. That's something that I had to learn the hard way. And so, Keepers of the Flame Foundation is here to support breast cancer patients with their mental health support as they're going through it as well, no matter where they've been in their diagnosis. If they're just diagnosed, if they're 30 years out, that's what we are here to support. And I just wanted to thank everybody for that.
So we'll go through, and if your name's, you're a survivor, please say so. So, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Catherine Coleman. I am...
That's the one?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Catherine Coleman. I am a breast cancer survivor. On October 14th, I'm gonna be 16 years cancer-free.
Good afternoon. My name is Sharon Simpson, and I am a breast cancer advocate.
All right.
I'm Gillian Nunnachilla, and I guess I'm a thriving survivor of 2001.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Carla Peterson. I'm an eight-year survivor.
Good afternoon. My name is Sharon Wanda Akins, and for the past 15 years, I have been a breast cancer advocate. I started doing it for Linda and I coworker, Gretzel Swinton, and not only am I a breast cancer advocate, I am a domestic violence survivor and advocate. Thank you.
Her fashion show is, she has a fashion show that's coming up.
Fashion show, oh, come on, Sharon.
Hi, again. Actually, the coordinator of a fashion show, it supports breast cancer as well as domestic violence. The three things that we do is we honor survivors of breast cancer and domestic violence. We promote awareness for breast cancer and domestic violence, and we raise funds for two organizations. One is Go Pink 365, a breast cancer initiative of latter strategies and solutions, and the other organization is Confidently Learn to Live, which is a domestic violence organization. The fashion show will take place on the 17th at 8 o'clock. Tickets are $25, and the venue is at my church, Kingdom Life Christian Fellowship Center.
Well, ladies, ladies, again, thank you all so much for being here and being transparent, and we certainly appreciate you. We stand with you, and we will be announcing the day when we, I don't know that we have the date yet, when we're turning City Hall pink as well, right? All right, so we want to make sure that you show up here at your house to see it in honor of you. So thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, just one other thing. Eight of the women up there are part of Women in Action, and that is why I appreciate y'all. That Purple Night was fantastic, and thank you so much. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. I have one more, then I'm gonna get to these champions over here. Dr. Berry is here? Come on. And our StoryCon folks. Savannah has a lot of distinctions, and this is one of them.
Tasha. Don't leave.
All right. Whereas, stories are the heartbeat of humanity. It's the way we make sense of the world, preserve our culture, connect with one another, and pass wisdom across generations. And whereas storytelling is both an ancient art and a modern necessity, engaging our hearts and minds, making information memorable, and motivating us to act with purpose and compassion. And whereas for individuals, stories provide emotional connection, bonding the storyteller and listener through shared experience. They help us form our personal identities, understand our emotions and decisions, and see our unique place in the world. And whereas stories foster empathy and understanding by allowing us to step into the experiences of others, cultivating compassion across cultures, generations, and perspectives, stories serve as the source of inspiration, reminding us that triumph often follows trial, and giving us courage to face our own challenges. And whereas for society and culture, stories are the foundation of cultural transmission, preserving traditions, values, and collective identity through time. They are a means of social connection, reminding us that we are not alone, and a tool of education enriching classrooms and communities alike. And whereas Savannah, Georgia, the city of timeless beauty, deep history, and unmatched creativity, has long celebrated the power of storytelling through its literature, music, art, architecture, and festivals that honor voices from every walk of life. And whereas Dr. Bertis Berry, who shares a story of hope every day, partnered with Jamie Espina to found the Institute of Story in partnership with Hospice Savannah. They have hosted StoryCon here in Savannah and stand as a testament to the enduring power of the narrative, bringing together creators, thinkers, and dreamers who recognize that storytelling is not merely entertainment. It is the very essence of human connection. And therefore, I, Van R. Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Savannah, and I just did this because I felt like I could, proclaim Savannah, Georgia as the StoryCon capital of the world. Because we said so. But encourage all citizens to celebrate the storytellers, authors, filmmakers, artists, educators, and everyday dreamers that help us to see ourselves and one another through the power of story. Because Savannah, in Savannah, every story matters, and every voice belongs. We talked a little bit earlier today, Mr. City Manager, about telling our story, and that we don't do enough of telling our story. Well, our big story, Savannah's story of 292 years, is really comprised of a bunch of little stories that we all contribute to this. So some years ago, was it three or four years ago, Dr. Berry talked to me about hosting an event called StoryCon here in Savannah. I was like, fine, let's do it. But it was, and has been every year since, an amazing opportunity of people coming here from around the country, sharing stories and not being ashamed of their stories, and not being ashamed of their true selves. So as much as we've talked about stories of domestic violence, there's stories there, stories of breast cancer survival, and those that have unfortunately perished, there's stories there. Stories of these championship young ladies that we're gonna see, those are stories still being written. And so we're gonna take this moniker on, and we're gonna own it, because everybody has a story, and every story matters. Dr. Berry?
Thank you. I'm Dr. Bertis Berry, and I want to tell you a story. First of all, thank you all for being so kind and generous to listen to all the stories that came before you. You do not have a story. You are a library, and many of you are the Library of Congress. I moved here about 24 years ago when I got married, and then I got divorced right after, had to write a country song. It's called, "If I Shot You When I Met You, I'd Be Out of Jail By Now." You can laugh. And during that time, my mother was diagnosed with a brain tumor, five heart attacks, six strokes, all kinds of things going on, raising five adopted children who were all born fetal alcohol and crack addicted. So many, many stories. And then when the pandemic happened, I had been doing work all over the world around story, and the pandemic happened, and I asked myself, what do I know, and what does my community need? And we needed story. We needed story because story connects us, story binds us. We are neurologically wired for narrative. When I tell your story, your mind automatically goes to the story that connects. And when we find ourselves connecting through story, we don't have to center ourself on somebody else's narrative. We don't have to take over the narrative because we're already connected. Savannah is a place of story. I tell people when they ask me, how long does it take to get anywhere? I say, well, I have to add 20 minutes because I stopped for story. Somebody's gonna have a story along the way, and that's gonna be a story of hope. People come here every year for the past four years for StoryCon from all over the world. Every day, people listen and connect to our stories from all over the world. We have one woman who lived in Missouri and one who lived in Jessup, and they connected as mother and daughter. And the Missouri woman now lives in Jessup. And it is an amazing thing how these stories have connected people from all over, all walks of life. I believe that in times like these, we need to share our stories. We need to connect. We need to find hope. We need to find joy, and in doing so, we will make the better, the world a better place, one story at a time. Thank you, Council, and thank you, Mayor Van Johnson, for making this the story capital of the world because it already is. Thank you.
Let's make sure we, let's get some names as well, and very excited to have all of you here, so.
I'm Micah. I'm a storykeeper and videographer.
My name is Rin London. I am donor relations coordinator, volunteer service coordinator, and VR therapist at Hospice Savannah.
And at Hospice Savannah, the storykeeping program was born where they literally keep last stories.
My name is Tammy Willis Thomas, and I am a storyteller and keeper. My first story was December 24th, 2020, and as a direct result, I have a mother. I was suffering from abandonment issues, and now she has came and filled in the gaps.
I'm Kathy. I had already five adopted children, and when I saw Tammy online, and we talked, and we talked, and I realized that she had really lost her mother very early and been given away. We just connected, and so I have a sixth daughter. Stories, the stories that we tell and that we hear at StoryCon have connected a whole lot of other people. There's a woman in Louisiana who found her son, a son, who became her son through stories. We have friendships and relationships, and the encouragement to acknowledge the wonderfulness that we all have and are, and that we recognize in each other. That makes a really big difference when there's so much division in the world right now. Part of the way that we can begin to overcome that is to listen to each other, not just our ideas, but our stories. When you know somebody else and know why they are the way they are, and they tell you that, it makes communication completely different. It absolutely does. Thank you, Dr. Berry.
Thank you. Let's give our big round of applause, and we're hoping to really engage Mr. City Manager more in helping people learn how to tell their stories, because at the end of the day, all we are, our stories. So thank you all so much. Now, I want, I want my trophy up here to our champions. So who says girls don't run the world? Girl, come on, come on. All right, she's coming. To recognition of our inaugural 2025 Girls Youth Flag Football League Champions. Put my, put my trophy right here. So Nick, who's gonna tell us a story? We want to know the story. These are the champions, huh?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. This summer marked the launch of Savannah's first-ever Girls Flag Football League, a league dedicated, a program dedicated specifically to young female athletes. And today, I'm pleased to share the inaugural season has officially crowned its first championship team, the Savannah Storm. This effort ref... This effort reflects our city's ongoing commitment to expanding access, promoting equity, and creating new opportunities for youth across Savannah. By supporting programs like this, we ensure that every child, no matter their background or gender, has a chance to grow, lead, and learn and succeed within our community and within sports itself. I also want to thank, we have a great team, both on the field to recognize, and I do also want to recognize our Team Savannah folks behind the scenes that made this happen from start to finish. They handled marketing, registration, uniforms, team formation, league branding. This was all something that we created in-house, and it's been really great to see the fruits of our labor. I want to and I have to introduce the dedicated coaches who've made this season possible, Ms. Ebony Robinson and Ms. Felicia Robinson. If you can come up and say a few words as well. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Ebony Robinson, the head coach of the Savannah Storm along with my sister, Felicia Robinson. I just want to say that, that the girls know I'm very proud of them, like their hard work, dedication, it doesn't go unnoticed, and I'm proud of you all. So I, and you, and you all and your parents, and also my supporting staff that I had with me to help me, to help this achievement happen. I told them in the beginning, our very first practice, that I wanted to win, and that's exactly what we did. We won. So ladies, congratulations.
All right. I guess we'll, we'll, we'll pass the mic. Jay, you were playing too?
No, sir.
All right, we'll start down and we'll just pass it around.
Ricky Allison, Assistant Director.
All right.
Felicia Robinson, Assistant Coach.
Turn around.
Gitarra Williams.
Tell us your name, just tell us your name.
Gitarra Williams.
All right.
Katie Berry, Athletics Coordinator.
All right. Don't get shy now.
Maya Glover.
All right.
Chuck McClellan, Rec Leader.
All right.
Iselle Walker.
All right. They get so shy now, I mean, y'all weren't shy on that field.
Clara Hubbard.
Anna Kate Mercer.
All right.
LeBeyah Wright.
London Brown.
Melissa Williams, parent.
Randy Robertson, Operations Manager over Athletics.
Oh, we have a grandparent? Grandma, go ahead, say grandma.
Becky Cheedham, Grandparent.
That's right. So, oh.
Chaka Moore, Coordinator.
All right. So how many teams were in the league? Y'all going to win again next year?
Yes.
Huh? You're not going to play?
I can't play.
You can't play? Why can't you play?
Because I'm crazy.
Oh. Okay, well, yeah, it happens like that. But look at this, I mean, this is pretty impressive. We are so proud of you, and we thank you. I saw Taffy Young hanging in the back. We talk about recreation reimagined, knowing that we have to reach people where they are. And we know that young ladies are just as competitive, if not more. I'm looking forward to our, our Girls Basketball League. I think we can have one. And the thing is, we have these young stars here. Dolly can learn discipline on the field, but can also learn it in the classroom and at home and in their communities and their neighborhoods. So we're so proud of y'all, we really are. So for those of y'all coming back, you know, so wait, you don't have nowhere to go? There aren't another, not another league for you to age up to? We got to fix that too, though, so, okay. But congratulations, let's show some love for our champions. See, I couldn't win these trophies like this, I mean, now I win them as mayor, so. Y'all come on. Look that, look that way.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Everybody in the 3rd District knows that October is the Love Month, Dietrich and I are going to give y'all a pizza party, yay, for 2nd and 3rd of June. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. As a cha, as a coach of a championship. Yeah, as you know, I'm a championship football coach with the Overthought Charter. And we well on our way to another championship. I know how you guys feel. You do know, you do know there is a Girls Flag Football League, middle school and high school, so make sure you keep going, and congratulations.
Yeah.
We are so proud of them, let's give them another round of applause. And for those that were asked the question about us conducting city business, this is city business.
Yes, it is.
This is city business.
Yes, it is, all day, every day.
And so we're, we're going to take the time to lift up support and praise our own. So let's go ahead and get into it. Under Alcohol License Hearings, Item Number 6 through 9. Approval to add a Class C liquor by the drink alcohol license to an existing Class C beer and wine alcohol license to Christina Provotis for 208 Wine Bar, a bar located 208 West Bay Street in Alderman District 2. Item Number 7, approval to ask to add a Class C liquor by the drink alcohol license with Sunday sales to an existing Class C beer alcohol license with Sunday sales to Christopher Emrick for Squealing Hog Barbecue, a restaurant at 206 East Bay Street in Alderman District 2. Item Number 8, approval to add a, for a Class C beer and wine by the drink alcohol license with Sunday sales to Amy Stafford for The Palace Diner, a restaurant at 7202 Abicorn Street, located in Alderman District 4. Item Number 9, approval of a Class E beer and wine by the package alcohol license to Virel Paladilla for Marathon at 329 East Montgomery Crossroads, a convenience store in Alderman District 4. This is a public hearing that I'm declaring open. Does anyone have anything against any of these licenses? Does anyone have anything against any of these licenses? Going once, going twice. Speak now, if ever hold thy peace.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to close the hearing.
Second. Probably moved in second, and all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item Number 6, this is for the 208 Wine Bar, Alderman Leggett. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I ask for the approval of a Class A, for a Class C liquor beer by the drink alcohol license to the existing Class C beer wine alcohol license to Christina, I don't want to mention her last name, sir, Pierwitz, thank you, for the 208 Wine Bar.
Second.
Probably moved in second, and all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item Number 7, this is for Squealing Hog Barbecue, 206 East Bay Street, Alderman Leggett. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I ask that we approve the Class, for a Class C liquor by the drink alcohol license with Sunday sales to the existing Class C beer alcohol license with Sunday sales to Christopher Emrick for Squealing Hog Barbecue.
Second.
We have probably moved to second it, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item Number 8 is Class C for The Palace Diner at 7202 Abicorn Street, Alderman Palumbo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, move for the approval of a Class C beer wine by the drink alcohol license with Sunday sales to Amy Stafford for The Palace Diner.
Second.
And probably moved in second, and all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item Number 9 is for Marathon at 329 East Montgomery Crossroads in Alderman District 4, Alderman Palumbo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, move for the approval of a Class E beer wine by the package alcohol license to Virel Paladilla for Marathon at 329 East Montgomery Crossroads.
And probably moved in second it, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you all, y'all go off and be great. Some good food coming online, I'm looking forward to all of it. Moving on to item Number 10, this is a public hearing to receive comments concerning the city's 2026 One-Year Action Plan, as you all are familiar with. We do, do this annually, this is the blueprint on how we use our federal funds and other resources to address the needs of low and moderate income persons. Entitlement funds include the CDBG funds, Home Emergency Solutions Grant while they last. So I've now declared that hearing open for anyone who wants to make comments concerning this. I think, Mr. Manager, unless you have any editorial comments, I think the city does an absolutely outstanding job in being stewards for these federal funds. All right, any comments regarding that? Speak now, if ever hold your peace. Going once.
Mayor, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir, I'm sorry.
Going twice. Alderman Wilder Brian.
Yes, sir, I was going to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, probably moved in second it, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Let's go to the companion item, item Number 26, was, is the approval of a resolution adopting our 2026 One-Year Action Plan.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved in second it, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item Number 11 is zoning hearings petition of Joshua Yellen on behalf of Christopher Woods LLC for zoning map amendment from B.C. Community Business and O.I.E. Office and Industrial Expanded to RMF 225 for 1.45 acres at 11965 Apache Avenue in Alderman District 6. Mr. Morrow, how are you, sir?
Excellent, excellent, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This is Edward Morrow, Director of Development Services at the MPC, here to talk to you briefly about one petition today. This is a rezoning request for a rezoning from B.C. Community Business and O.I.E. Office and Institutional Expanded for a rezoning to RMF 225, which is a multifamily zoning category for residential development up to 25 dwelling units per acre. And so you can see on your screen, you do not have a future land use request because this is one where the parcel is already situated. That gold color you see is residential general, which is a flume designation for properties that are ideal for residential uses at a density exceeding 10 dwelling units per acre. The red that you see that surrounds it is a regional commercial designation. This is the Savannah Mall site, and as you can imagine, this is a good location for apartments. And looking at the zoning map, you can see it's presently zoned O.I.E. in B.C. there. The vast majority of the parcel is already zoned for a potential multifamily residential use, as well as a number of other relatively low intensity non-residential uses. But at MPC staff request, the petitioner did come back and request to zone those consistent with that RMF zoning that you see kind of to the north. Just to offer you a better angle here, this is right next to Dillard's. I believe there's an outdoor, an outdoor outfitter that has some storage space, and this is directly across the street from that. You can see there are some adjoining apartments already developed next door, that is the Ramsey Run apartment complex. Ramsey Run was developed in 1981 when this was a PUDM zoning district, which under the previous zoning ordinance, was a multifamily designation. In 2006, this parcel was rezoned to PBC for a proposed mini storage warehouse development that never materialized. So you can see the site plan for that over on the right-hand side. In 2010, that Dollar General that you see was subdivided for development, and what remains was rezoned under 2019 to B.C. and the O.I.E. designations that you see today. You can see on the right-hand side of your screen, this is the proposed concept that the developer has provided. We expect to see a three-building configuration, more or less, totaling about 36 units, so maybe 12 units per building. There are some development standards associated with the RMF 2, you can see in Section 5.10.5 of the zoning ordinance. This allows a maximum of 50% lot coverage, and these could be expected to be as tall as about 50 feet. Just to show you the existing apartments that are there, there's an image of Ramsey Run. And so with that, MPC staff and the board have both recommended approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, this is a public hearing. Any questions or comments regarding, well, comments regarding this item? Mr. Yellen, I suppose you really don't want to say nothing, do you? It would be wise.
Say goodbye to them and make them money.
Going once.
Thank you.
Going twice.
Mr. Mayor?
Speak now, if ever hold your peace. Alderman Purte.
Move to close the hearing.
Second motion.
Probably move the second, Mr. Yellen, you sure? You don't want to say anything? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Any com, any questions or comments from Council? Okay, let's move to companion item, item Number 12, which they are requesting on first and second, unless anyone has an issue with it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that the first read to be considered the second, the ordinance placed upon its passage and pass.
Second.
And probably moved in second, that the first reading be considered the second, it's in order, on this place on the passage and pass. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, thank you. You sure you don't want to say nothing? All right, we have some second readers, petition annex 66.05 acres located at 5 West Gateway Boulevard and 0 Fort Argyle Road from Chatham County to the city of Savannah, which I'm pleasure regarding this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adopt the agenda item as written.
Second.
Then probably moved in second it, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item Number 14, petitioner Wesley Green on behalf of Blue Heron Development Incorporated to amend the future land use map amendment from planned development to commercial regional for 0 Fort Argyle Road.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adopt the agenda item as written.
Second motion.
Then probably moved in second it, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item Number 15, petitioner Wesley Green on behalf of Blue Heron Development Incorporated to amend the zoning map from PBC to B.C. with conditions to support the annexation of 66.05 acres at 5 West Gateway Boulevard and 0 Fort Argyle Road.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adopt the agenda item as written.
Second.
Then probably moved in second it, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much. Under purchasing items, peruse items Number 16 through 24, and I will entertain a motion to adopt unless we have any pullouts.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion for, under the purchasing items, for items Number 16 through 24.
Second.
I'm almost scared because, I mean, tell me, I was going to say, y'all, y'all don't have no pullouts?
No, no, go ahead, keep moving, let's get out of here.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm getting ready to start.
Yeah.
Okay, where you want to pull out?
Look at there.
Oh.
All right, can we, can we just go through it? I mean, okay, so we'll, we'll go through it and then you want, well, go ahead and explain it, 24, and then we'll go through them.
Thank you. 24 is a, to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Garbit Construction Company for a construction manager at risk, known as a C-MAR, for pre-construction services for the Waterworks Stabilization Project. The Waterworks building, as we discussed this morning and have discussed for several years, an important community and cultural asset, which the city council has budgeted $8.1 million for the stabilization of that, and up to $20 million at least for the redevelopment of that site into a community asset, entrepreneurial center, and, and market, et cetera. We are using now more frequently what's called a construction manager at risk procurement for construction projects, which bring the con, which brings the contractor on much earlier to be able to work side by side with the designers and the engineers during the designing phase, and so that there can be greater collaboration and better understanding about what's being designed, so that it can be built better. This, the first phase of a C-MAR is pre-construction phase, which is that coordination and cooperation with the design and engineering. For this particular project, the cost of that pre-construction phase is $0. However, in the future, we will be coming to Council to add additional phases to this C-MAR contract. The C-MAR is a, we can refer to it as a marriage, really, with a, with a construction partner to, to bring the project kind of cradle to grave, if you will. So that, that's why the C-MAR item here is at $0. We had a few respondents to this RFP. Two were pushed forward for further evaluation, the highest scores. One of those firms that was pushed forward withdrew after they were pushed forward, and we're left with. we're left with the, with Garbutt, who's a very capable firm, and is why we've got our recommendation to move forward with them as the construction manager at risk for our Waterworks Stabilization Project, which will total about $8.1 million. Today's contract is worth zero, but in the, in full transparency, even though this is within my procurement authority, for all C-MAR contracts, I want to make sure that council has, is the one authorizing me to enter into these contracts, because it is a longer relationship.
I don't think your mic is on, ma'am.
I wanted you to say that so that the public could hear it, because when John Q. Public looks at that and says, oh, zero, you know, I wanted you to explain it so that they have a better understanding of why it's $0.
And thank you for that, and just to note, we will be doing a workshop on construction manager at risk procurement practices and how they relate to DBE and local DBE participation at our next council workshop.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, because I think we're prohibited from doing DBE goals on construction, right?
For construction primes, we are, yes.
Okay. All right, so you don't wish to pull it off now, right?
No.
Okay.
Be good, I'll just explain it.
Okay. Item number 16, authorize city manager to execute a contract for tree and stump removal services from Arbor Nature LLC in an amount not to exceed $670,000. Item number 17, notification of an emergency purchase for demolition services at 925 East President Street with Masterful Enterprises LLC in the amount of $410,610. Item number 18, authorize city manager to execute a contract for as needed or on call geotechnical engineering services to Whittaker Laboratory in the amount not to exceed $250,000 to provide geotechnical engineering services for city projects. Item number 19, authorize city manager to execute a contract for roofing application with Metal Crafts Local in the amount not to exceed $165,100. The facilities maintenance department will utilize this contract for labor and materials for a silicone roof coating at City Hall. Item number 20, authorize city manager to execute a contract for 155-ton low-ball trailer from Yancey Brothers in the amount not to exceed $111,556.
Mr. Mayor?
I have requested to withdraw number 20, but it doesn't matter, I won't execute the contract until it's ready.
I withdraw 20. I'm sorry, 20.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. 20 is withdrawn. Item number 21, authorize city manager to execute a contract for 330-ton equipment trailers and 124-ton equipment trailer from Yancey Brothers care of towmaster trailers in the amount not to exceed $167,359. Item number 22, authorize city manager to execute a contract for portable radios from Motorola in the amount not to exceed $247,330. Item number 23, authorize city manager to execute a contract with Reeves Young LLC for construction manager at risk pre-construction services at the Pacific Legacy Arena removal project in the amount of $15,000. Item number 24, authorize city manager to execute a contract with Garbutt Construction Company for construction manager at risk pre-construction services for the Waterworks Stabilization Project in the amount of $0, which was described by the city manager. So I'm asking for your approval, items number 16 through 19, 21 through 24.
So move, sir.
Move and approve.
They're second. Probably moved in second, and all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 25, we discussed extensively today, this is the time, it is time for us to adopt the common ground, the master plan for Savannah's Canal District and Action Playbook and collective implementation of the Canal District Master Plan. I think the words are moving forward and more to come. So is there a motion to adopt?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Before we adopt this, I just wanted to mention that this is a great day for the city of Savannah.
Yes, ma'am.
Especially for the west side of Savannah. We are working to adopt the Canal District Plan and move forward with this plan, and we'll have an opportunity as leaders of the city to do two things, two goals, and that's to uplift those west side communities, use this project and the work we're doing in the Canal District to help uplift those west side communities, and also to accommodate the downtown expansion and the growth of the downtown. So this is a great day for us to be able to manage those two things and do this work, and we're going to move forward. And today, I would like to move for the approval of common ground, the master plan for Savannah's Canal District Connection Playbook, collective implementation of the Canal District Master Plan.
Probably move the second and all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Manager, let's get to work. Let's get it done. Item number 27, the resolution authorizing the adoption of the 2025 Capitol Improvements Element Annual Update, following the approval of the draft report by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs to comply with the Georgia Department Impact Act and maintain the city of Savannah's qualified local government certification.
So move, sir.
Second.
Then probably move the second and all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 28 is authorize city manager to negotiate and execute a lease agreement for the Thomas Gamble Ground Floor Lease Space with Galaxy Cafe, commonly known as Olympia Cafe.
Move.
Before we go there, let me just say this. This, this is a legal process that had to occur. We were required, Mr. Attorney, by law to create a public process. We have done that. The bids were received in accordance with the law. I say a blue ribbon panel of personnel designated by the city manager reviewed the proposals, and they came back what they felt was the best proposal. Our vote in this will allow the city manager, under our authorization, to negotiate and then execute the lease agreement for the city-owned space. Now entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Probably move the second, all in favor say opine.
Mmm wow.
I wish, I wish I would have had some fire to throw up in the air. Can we say opine together? One, two, three.
Good job, y'all.
Huh?
Thank you, Mr. Base, for keeping us out of here.
Yeah, bring it up. Although I am sure we celebrate what's to come, we also celebrate, remember, who we've lost.
Oh.
So may our great friend Nick Papas, may he continue to rest in our hearts, and may his memory continue to be a blessing.
Yes.
So to our Olympia family, thank you for being who you are, and such amazing ambassadors to our wonderful city.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank y'all so much for being here.
So although it's not a public hearing, go ahead, because you really want to say something. I'm going to break my own rule, but go ahead, because you really want to, so.
Mayor, city council.
Come on.
Mr. City Manager, thank you. Thank you so much, because today, all these employees, and tomorrow, the Olympia Cafe to be, be open, to have the job. Thank you very much. Today is very tough day for me. I remember 35 years ago.
Come on, don't worry about our computer.
Next to me was Mr. Papas, across, Mr. Rosakis, and Mr. Madosa, and Floyd Adams, and Mr. Stillwell, and Mr. Jackson, and it's very tough. I promised continuous, the best service and the best food.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, supporters. Thank you, Savannah. Thank you for everybody.
One more.
And I promised to work very hard for city of Savannah, because I remember what they say, Mr. Rosakis and Floyd 35 years ago, and Vasili and Nick, because the Olympics to been in Georgia '94. Now will be 2026.
That's right.
The World Cup, the soccer. Because I'm working with the FIFA, I need to give some good news, and, and the first year to start the new jobs in the United States, 320,000 people. Sorry about, because the English is my second language, you listen 320,000. Thank you, Savannah. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We close. We close, we close because all these people, and don't sleep the night, and the way this is a big day.
No, I mean, look, we need to greet food, y'all.
But yeah, I promise to be back 5 o'clock to open for everybody.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We need to pray for Nick. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I think.
Drinks for everybody on me.
Double water.
Item number 29 is settlement number one.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion to move to authorize the city attorney's office to settle the claim of Darryl Scott for $77,000.
Second.
Probably move the second, that we move to authorize city attorney's office to settle the claim of Darryl Scott for $77,000. You heard the motion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen, that ends our agenda. Now, how long this continues depends on y'all.
Oh, no, no, gotta make these announcements.
All right, I'm just, I'm just saying, the length of your announcements shouldn't be the length of the meeting, so we'll start.
Yeah, I'm going to try.
Alderman Bell, we'll start with you. I did? All right, I'll start this time.
Come down this way, come on. Okay, I'll start. I have one announcement. Ms. Hickey, thank you for joining us today. Ms. Hickey is with Hickey Security. Hickey Security Headquarters is in Atlanta, but they're in multiple cities, and they're working in Savannah. Her dad was here last month, honey, about two months ago, to do business here in Savannah. Met the gentleman, lovely gentleman, he got ill, he's passed away, so we want to send our sympathy and condolences to you and your family, and thank you for continuing to work with us here in Savannah, in the security business. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, thank you again. I just, we don't have anything too much, I just wanted to offer our condolences, especially to all of those who have survived and suffered from breast cancer, and to my friends, the Daniels family, I just wanted to offer our condolences at City Council.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to be really quick. Wanted to thank the awesome Dr. Jennifer Blalock, Miriam Impero, for making our second annual Color Purple event a spectacular event for 140 women. Want to thank those 20 ambassadors, want to thank Dr. Freddie Gilley, Dr. Mildred McLean, and Audrey King for speaking. The third district wants to announce, we can't give the key to the city, but we can give you an angel, and we want to make sure that we give people in our district things like for keeping, keeping the streets clothed and cleaned, and helping the elderly, and doing things in the neighborhood that makes a community whole. Also want to announce with the Business Center, on Wednesday, October the 22nd, we'll be doing a innovate with us, with the elderly residents can expect a chance to share ideas with personal experience with food, the gift card. We just want to make sure that we keep our, our, our people in the community always innovative and changing the quality of life, and partnering them with amazing departments that, that move our district, all the districts forward, so that we can live in a better environment. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Quick thing, real quick, special shout out to Taphany Young in the city manager's office, we already got work going on over at WW Law, so we already have the kitchen already, the demolition has happened, they're putting things back together, and a special shout out to all of our partners and all of our kids working at WW Law.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I forgot to mention a shout out for Shamika Simmons, she's going across all of, all of the districts, offering free mammograms, she's already did it. Shouts out again to Dr. Blalock, you did that thing, girl, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I would like to invite the public out to join me over at the Liberty City Community Center on Sunday, this coming Sunday, and I'll be hosting the 2025 Builders of the Bridge Honors. And this program and event are for, to honor those whose names are seldomly called, but who continue to do the work. So I'm asking you to just join me as we just celebrate those who always are in the background, and who, whose names are, are never called, but always, always show up. We'll be there at 3 o'clock PM on this coming Sunday, October the 12th, and I want to thank everyone involved for getting us and getting me to this, this point for this grand event for our citizens. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Plumbo. Alderman Purte.
Real quick, Mr. Mayor, I want to say thanks to city staff. Last night, we had a very successful District 6 Town Hall meeting. You know, we highlighted the Windsor Forest Community Center and public safety, as well as the South Side Legacy Project, to which I want to recognize that one of my Neighborhood Association Presidents, Mr. Anand Rao, is here. Appreciate you, sir, the South Side Neighborhood Association voice there. But thank you to city staff, and thank you to all the city employees involved in that. It was truly an amazing night, so thank you all.
My apologies should be in there, something caught me, and I don't know what it was, but it was a rough night, so.
Sleep.
Huh?
Sleep.
No, sick, I don't know what it was, but I was bad off.
Keep it over there.
I'm better now.
And I apologize, but I had a conflict.
Alderman Blakely.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. I want to say, send shouts out to the Hungry Club Forum for their gala on Saturday night. It was exceptional, and I just happened to be one of the honorees there, and I just want to tell them thank you so much. I want to remind people that the midterm elections are coming up. Y'all, please, it is so very, very important, city, that you get to the polls and you vote for municipalities in our community, please, make sure that you get to the polls and you vote. I want to send deepest and sincerest condolences to the family of April Daniels, who lost her battle to cancer. You know, like they said earlier today, that's something that we need to actually take time to check ourselves, to make sure that our health is wealth. Also, I want to send a strong shout out to my baby boy, 38 years old today, 10 pounds, 11 ounces. I'm so proud of him, he's an awesome father, son, brother, cousin, uncle, and all that above. And I thank, oh, Anand Rao, my veteran brother, thank you so much for all you do on the south side of Savannah. We truly, truly appreciate you, okay? All right, y'all, have a great weekend.
Alderman Bell?
No.
Thank you. I want to add to our condolences to the Daniels family, April is actually my cousin, so send out our prayers to her entire family.
And she was a fantastic beautician.
Yes, she was.
Yes, she was.
No, stylish.
Just want to, the Freedom From Banquet for NAACP is tomorrow, council, if you are interested in going, I need to know today. So I do, we do have a table for staff and council, I just need to fill that today, so just let me know.
I want to go.
All right, just see me right after this. Anything, Mr. Attorney, anything?
I got mine. Mr. Manager?
Huh?
Is that what you meant?
Oh, Mr. Attorney, you have anything? Mr. Clerk, you have anything? Mr. Manager?
I just want to wish Chief Joseph Sheerhouse happy birthday, he'll be celebrating tomorrow.
Oh.
Walked out.
All right, y'all have to re, y'all have to kind of work this better that you can, you know, when we called the name, he snuck out. Get him.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Happy belated birthday.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Huh?
I said happy belated birthday to the mayor.
Look at me. It was last Friday, yeah. I'm a Libra. I'm a Libra. Libra? Yeah. They are Libras. I tell you, all right, well, happy birthday, oh, wait, is that him? Happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Joe House.
Happy birthday to you. We are adjourned. Thank you so much.